Hey, look at Mr. Brian Allen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'll all join me in prayer, please. Supreme Architect of the universe, we invoke thy blessing at this time. May this meeting thus be conducted in peace and close in harmony. Amen? Welcome all to the Public Business Meeting of the Allegheny County Commissioners, Thursday, April the 3rd, 2014. Commissioners, are there any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Okay. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the March 27th, 2014 Public Business Meeting.
Sumoed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Under the report of the President, I'd like to read this news release. Coalition grows to 11 counties representing more than 1 million Maryland citizens. This week, Hartford County Executive David Craig joined the Maryland Rural Counties Coalition as an associate member, expanding the membership of the coalition to now consisting of 11 counties. The coalition comprises of Allegheny, Caroline Carroll, Cecil, Dorchester, Frederick, Hartford, Kent, Somerset, Washington, and Waucomaco Counties, representing 1.2 million Maryland residents. On December 12th, 2011, the governing bodies of Allegheny, Carroll, Frederick, and Washington Counties announced the creation of the Maryland Rural Counties Coalition with its eyes towards the rural counties joining their ranks for the purpose of strengthening their policy-related standings in the halls of Annapolis. Since then, seven additional counties have now become members of the coalition. Maryland Rural Counties Coalition Chairman and Allegheny County President Mike McKay stated, "We are tremendously pleased and honored that Hartford County has chosen to aid with their collective voice to the coalition. We look forward to working with Hartford County Exec David Craig along with the members of the coalition in our mutual goal to ensure that unique needs and perspectives of Maryland rural communities are taken into consideration during the decision-making process in Annapolis." Hartford County Executive David Craig states, "Rural Maryland often finds itself at a strategic disadvantage from the policy decisions made by the Maryland General Assembly. Our intent is to help balance the decision-making process in Annapolis so that Maryland's interests are strengthened and equated to the interests of non-rural Maryland. This can only be accomplished by working together in partnership through a strong alliance between Maryland rural counties." A charter coalition founding member and Coalition Executive Board Member Frederick County Commissioner President Blaine R. Young noted, "The 11 counties of our coalition represents more than 1 million residents and in our collective membership allows our jurisdiction. And in turn, the citizens of Maryland rural counties are a bigger voice in Annapolis. Hartford County is in a unique position as a member of the Big Seven in Maryland, which consists of the six largest counties and Baltimore City. But they also have a very diverse jurisdiction that is both rural and urban and will provide a very distinctive perspective for the Maryland Rural Counties Coalition." Gentlemen, this happened yesterday with Hartford joining. Of course, the Rural Counties Coalition on Monday voted to expand to associate members, and this is the first county, and I expect two or three other counties to be joining in the near future. So, some good news about the strength of rural counties and their voice down in Maryland. Down in Annapolis, I should say. Okay, gentlemen, we're going to do our proclamations first, and the first proclamation is for the Week of Young Child in Allegheny County. Ms. Darlene Schmidt. How are you? Would you please, if you'd like to say a few words, and before we give you this proclamation? Yes, ma'am, right there? If you feel comfortable.
Well, I want to thank you very much for doing this. I represent the Western Maryland AEYC, which is the Association for the Young Child, which is a part of the National Association for the Young Child. And we feel that the education of young children is very important beginning at birth because children's brains are developing at that time, and we just appreciate your proclaiming this the Week of the Young Child.
Wonderful. Would you join us up here for this proclamation, please? Wait in the center, please. Commissioners, this proclamation reads as follows. Allegheny County Government, whereas the Maryland Association for the Education of Young Children, Western Maryland Chapter, and other organizations, in conjunction with the National Association for the Education of Young Children, are celebrating the Week of the Young Child in April. And whereas these organizations are working to improve early learning opportunities, including early literacy programs, and can provide a foundation for the learning of children in Allegheny County, Maryland. And whereas teachers and others who make a difference in the lives of young children in Allegheny County deserve the thanks and recognition. And whereas public policies that support early learning for all young children are crucial to young children's futures. Now therefore, we, as the County Commissioners of Allegheny County, do hereby proclaim April 6th through the 12th, 2014, as the Week of the Young Child in Allegheny County, and encourage all the citizens to work to make a good investment in the early childhood in Allegheny County. With the great seal of Allegheny County and the three county commissioners affixed. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This one will get a picture.
One more. Thank you.
What was that with the camera moving?
She's checking the movie.
Said, wow, the wind, is it widescreen, or is... Congratulations. Thank you very much. Let's hold them off. Okay. We have one more. This is Fair Housing Month. Mr. Nedved.
You're all going to stand?
Yep, because you're not going to talk.
I'll have to be quick.
Please.
Would you like to do the proclamation first? Would that help?
Yes, please.
Okay, let's do that first.
He has a lot to say, too.
Yeah, no, I don't have a lot.
Everything's highlighted.
Will you just gallop in then?
I can do that. I'm not sure what would be good for us. You're on my board, so you know.
It'll be fine. This one, take outside.
Actually, here, I'm going to have you stay over there. That's more important.
Okay. Allegheny County, Maryland, whereas the County Commissioners of Allegheny County join with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, celebrating the 46th anniversary of the Fair Housing Act of 1968. And whereas the 1968 Fair Housing Act guarantees the right of all Americans to dwell in a neighborhood of their choice, and one of the most important components of our national civil rights policy. And whereas, even though this nondiscriminatory policy is the law of the land and is properly enforced, requires the continued cooperation of all levels of government, the real estate and home building industries, and private citizens. And whereas throughout Maryland, the spirit of cooperation is being provided through the efforts of our federal, state, and local governments, and with the support of the countless communities and nonprofit organizations. And whereas promoting equal housing opportunity is essential to the larger mission of promoting justice in the areas of life for all citizens, and equal housing opportunity has drastically impacted the school integration and the acceptance and understanding of ethnic and racial diversity. Now therefore, we as County Commissioners of Allegheny County do hereby proclaim April 2014 as Fair Housing Month in Allegheny County, and urge all citizens to join in creating and promoting fair housing and the opportunities for all people. And witness whereof, we have here on two, set our hands to be set on the great seal of Allegheny County, Maryland, to be affixed this third day in April in the year 2014. Signed by all County Commissioners. Congratulations, Courtney. Thank you very much. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, sir.
David, did I say it all?
Yeah.
Did I pretty much say it all?
Yeah, you did.
All right. You don't have to say anything. Anyway, I can handle it for you. Is there something I missed?
Let me just point out, I want to, Commissioners, all I want to do is briefly...
This is not open-mic night.
All I want to do is briefly touch on programs that are available for the citizens of Allegheny County. I want to talk about the great partnership that Allegheny County Government has with HRDC, with the Human Resources Development Commission, headed by Courtney here. And I want to talk about the fact that we have a partnership with HRDC for homeless and transitional, which includes emergency assistance and placement, transitional living arrangements and assistance in finding permanent housing through apartment finding and credit arrangements. We also have programs for affordable housing, where Allegheny County owns and HRDC manages rental housing for eligible residents throughout Allegheny County, eligibility based on family size and occupant income. We also have programs for rehab housing, where we provide residential rehabilitation for low and moderate income families in Allegheny County. We also partner with HRDC on second-hand monthly rental assistance for low-income houses and families. And we also partner on rental allowance, which provides monthly rent assistance for low-income families who are homeless or have emergency housing need. And lastly, one other program I'd like to point out is the Maryland Mortgage Program, which allows people to basically, first-time buyers, or actually anybody that wants to buy a house, to basically get a low-interest mortgage in Allegheny County, because we're a target area. And now I'd like to hand over the mic and get out of the way.
Thank you.
I'm going to embarrass him because he forgot one.
What did I forget?
The foreclosure assistance program, which is one of our newer programs, and unfortunately there is a growing need for foreclosure counseling here in this community, but we do have the capacity to provide the foreclosure counseling and also work directly with servicers to help people maintain their homes. But what I would really like to do tonight is to thank the county for their partnership and their ongoing support of HRDC in our programs, specifically in housing. I shared with David before the meeting that we're very fortunate here in this county to have such a group of active commissioners who are very involved in the community and the things that are happening here, as well as a very knowledgeable and supportive county staff. I can tell you that when I go downstate and I'm interacting with my counterparts from community action agencies across the state, this doesn't always occur, and it makes my job and our agency's job much easier because of that support and ongoing assistance from you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Courtney. That's nice. I know Commissioner Brody, who's on their board, is very active. Of course, Bill participates at the senior program, and I'm hoping at the senior prom, I'll have my dance card filled coming up. So, they promised me lots of good food, so I don't know. Anyhow, all right. You're going to miss me when I'm gone. Anyhow, item number one, gentlemen, presentation, the Safety Range Development Project. Who is going to speak first? Mr. Young, or is it going to be Chief Dick?
Can I close this without breaking anything? That's all right, I'm fine with it. I'm fine. Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Everly, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening as we discuss the proposal or the concept of potentially building or establishing a public safety, multi-use or multifunctional safety range on county property at PPG Road, Mexico Farms. I'll try to touch a little bit on why I think we should build it, the need for it, and how it potentially can be used. I think it's certainly, I start off by simply saying, Allegheny County Sheriff's Office does not have a range facility at this time, have never had a range facility, and it creates tremendous logistics problems for them trying to get adequate range time in. They're using ranges that belong to other organizations, other agencies. They're limited with their time, but they're also limited with some of the training and some of the type of shooting situations, training situations, that they're able to use the ranges for. So, it creates a difficult situation for them. I can't overemphasize or overstate the importance of modern quality training for public safety personnel, especially law enforcement personnel. Quality training equates to professional law enforcement, equates to respected law enforcement, professional agency. It's important to our citizens who receive the services, but it's equally and critically important to our first responders, to the deputies, the law enforcement officers, personnel as well, because it enhances their safety also and their well-being. So, I think it has to be a priority. We currently have, and we've used it for several years now, the Public Safety Complex or the Public Safety Building at Lower PPG Road. Now, this is an excellent facility. It's a large facility. It houses several different entities, including hazmat, emergency medical services, emergency management, the backup 911 center is there. It has two well-equipped, high-tech classrooms with great training aids, most of which I should point out also were paid for by grant funding, and it's a great place for training. Regular training on a literally monthly, weekly basis occurs at that facility for firefighters, law enforcement, EMS, hazmat, the whole nine yards. It's a great facility, but it's basically limited, what we can do now, to classroom use only. Now, I'm certainly not, we're certainly not trying to eliminate or get rid of classroom-type training. That's a critical part of law enforcement training and public safety training as well. But the missing component, especially for an agency like the Sheriff's Office, has been a modern-use range where they can do and put some of the things they get in the classroom to usage on the range training. Not a lot of ranges, there's truly not a lot of firearms ranges available in Allegheny County. Most of the ranges that do exist in Allegheny County and ones that they've used were built many, many years ago, before modern law enforcement training techniques came into being. A lot of those ranges have a simple berm, like that wall over there, not much of anything on the sides, and they're designed for basic standing and shooting, or standing, sitting at a bench sometimes and shooting. And that doesn't equate to good, modern firearm practices and training today. Training has changed greatly in recent years. It's dynamic now, and it's as realistic as possible. Moving and shooting, getting off the X, if you're standing still when you're shooting, or you're standing still if you have an actual gunfight, you're in trouble. So, they train with shooting and moving training that really fits what happens every day, in everyday life, when firearms situations occur. Multiple targets, shooting in multiple directions. Every agency, and I know the Sheriff's Department does, they emphasize now judgmental training, shoot, don't shoot type situations, and that takes a special type of range to accommodate as well. Now, we have used a couple of ranges, and I got to commend Deputy Dixon, he's here this evening with the sheriff. He and Israel Sibley, Deputy Sibley, and I've shot it several times over the years, they put together a judgmental shooting, shoot, don't shoot course, and this is some of the best training you can get. They did it literally with some tuba fours, some cardboard, some strings, some gongs, a few things like this. And I'm telling you, when you go through that course, at the end of it, you are stressed out, just like you would be in a real scenario, a real situation. You've probably got, I don't know, $25 in materials there, but it's well-done, and it shows what can be done if they had a range where they could really put something together effectively, a range like we're talking about, they would really have something special. It works well now, but it certainly could be expanded on with this proposed range. Every agency, if they're not emphasizing it now, the use of non-lethal weapons, the use of less-than-lethal force is big in 2014 and should be. We deal with a lot of people with mental illnesses, a lot of people with a variety of issues, and, you know, the last thing you want to do is use lethal force. So, there's a lot of emphasis now on non-lethal force and non-lethal training. This facility, again, will prove invaluable for that type of training for the Sheriff's Office. I'm talking about things like tasers, I'm talking about things like bean bags that are placed in shotgun shells and other types of weapons, that instead of shooting a person with a projectile, you shoot this bean bag out, and it literally, it has like lead pellets in it, basically. They're heavy and they hurt, but it hits the person and it disables them, you're able to take them into custody. But you have to have special places to do that kind of training. Semunitions training. And if you're not familiar with semunitions, what that amounts to, and it is really realistic good training as well, and it teaches you quickly, if you have bad habits, to eliminate those bad habits. You'll take the deputy or the officer's regular service weapon, and they replace some parts in it to render it incapable of firing an actual live projectile, but what it does fire are these little semunition pellets, like, they look like something like an eraser on the end of a pencil. And they use a lot of cover and concealment and movement and so forth. It's defensive and offensive, that type thing, but I can tell you right now, when you get swatted with one of those things, it's like a hornet's sting or something, and they leave a great welt, and you quickly learn to use cover and concealment and those type things. This facility will really play into using that type of situation down there as well. It doesn't cost a lot for semunitions training, once you get the equipment, but it pays big dividends, but you have to have the places to do it. The facility we're talking about in Lower PPG Road will be perfect because we have both outdoor and indoor type situations where it can be used. High-risk traffic stops, this would be a great place to function, vehicle takedowns and so forth, training down there. And again, it's the type facility that's designed in such a way, and Steve Young will talk a little bit about that when he gets up here, that really plays into this type of training. I think we're looking at a really, really nice facility that every effort has been made to, well, and I'll let Steve get into that, but we're not talking about spending a great deal of money to do this. The county owns the property and so forth, and we're talking about placing it there, and I think it's going to be a major asset. This will be a closed range, unless the county feels differently about it. By that, I mean it will be fenced, it will be safe, it will be protected and secure, but it can and certainly would be available to other public safety agencies, other law enforcement agencies to use, and it would be of great benefit to them as well. It's available and hopefully should be used for multi-agency training, interagency training as well. It's more than just there for law enforcement also. There's plenty of things, fire EMS, or some training together with EMS personnel and law enforcement together, when you're talking hostage barricade situations or other active shooter situations, that type thing. One thing I forgot to mention, when I talked about multi-usage, one of the, I think I didn't mention, canine training. A great place for agencies to train canine dogs, attack training, discipline training. We have used it down near the facility for drug detection and so forth, and that can all be tied together in one nice package for canine training. So, again, it's a multi-function, multi-usage, far more than just a firearms range. It has been mentioned, and again, it would certainly be up to the Commissioners and the Sheriff and so forth, the possibility of opening this range up occasionally or in certain scheduled days for public usage. And that certainly could be done. Obviously, you would want county personnel, range officers, or somebody there, but I think there could be an advantage to opening it up on scheduled days. It doesn't have to be, you know, every month or anything like that, where new firearms owners in Allegheny County, maybe females that have purchased a firearm but never really shot a lot, where you could do a class that involves safety and familiarization. And I would say these classes, 80% of it should be on safety and firearms familiarization. And then you can take them actually out on the range and fire a few rounds for familiarization and emphasize the safety skills. I think there potentially could be an advantage of that, but again, that would be up to the county and the sheriff to work something like that out. But again, I think we're going to get an awful lot of bang for the buck for this range, and I don't think we're talking probably a great deal of money, so.
Okay.
Was that a pun? Bang for your buck?
I threw that in there. My wife says I don't have a sense of humor.
What we have on the projector here is a kind of a first-shot preliminary design for the facility. Just to give you a little information, this is the Public Safety Building right here. This is the garage behind the building. In this yellow area is an existing paved parking lot behind the building. So, and the CNO canal would be down here at the bottom of the page. The facility that we're looking at, the direction of fire would be from northwest to the southeast, and if you continue on that direction of fire, there are no structures down range of the firing. In fact, if you go out 1,500 yards, there's a mountain there. It's actually in West Virginia, but there's nothing in between. What the yellow lines are here, this would actually be a basin, so you would walk out of the back of the building here, down into the shooting range. The bottom of the shooting range, the elevation of the bottom, would be dictated by drainage, so that we'd be able to get water draining out of the basin on down toward the canal. The width of the, so basically this inside yellow line is a flat area. The target area out here is about 100 foot wide, and it's about 25 yards this way. I'm going to use this stupid thing. But we also have the capability of moving back and firing at 100 yards. So, from there down to here is 100 yards. This berm on the right-hand side is a 20-foot-high berm. On this side, the canal side, is a 10-foot-high berm, and there's also a berm that wraps around on this side. And as Bobby mentioned, the facility should be fenced. There's about 7,000 yards of material to move, and the actual width of this flat area would be dictated by some site constraints. There are some water and sewer lines down here in the bottom, we can't cover up too much, but more from a standpoint of how much dirt we need to build the berms. So, we just widen it out to get the dirt that we need. And so, that's pretty much the design. We've met with the shooting officers and Bobby several times, and I think we're kind of honing in on things. There are some other amenities that we'd like to see at the facilities, some pavilions, some buildings for storing targets and things like that, and some different access points. But all in all, I think this is a really good place to have this kind of range. There are businesses, obviously, nearby, but there are no homes in probably half to three-quarters of a mile of this facility.
Steve, with respect to the design standards that you followed here, what authorities did you rely upon to come up with this design?
Thank you. I didn't mention that. I brought a notebook with me. This, we're designing this in accordance with the NRA Range Manual, okay? So, that dictates the way you build your berms, the way you set up your shooting. So, we're trying to follow their dictates, and I would say that they're probably recognized as the authorities in this area.
Now, with respect to the actual construction of this project, I know Paul Kales in the back, and we've talked about this, but the actual construction, this could be done by county staff, the roads crew could go in with the operator and loader.
They certainly have the expertise and the equipment to, you know, to try to tackle this kind of a project. The fencing would be something that would need to be done commercially, for sure.
What's the next step?
Lock and load.
Commissioners, before we turn dirt and move on this project, we wanted to discuss it with you publicly and get your input and answer any questions that you might have on this initiative, and we'll take the next one.
Well, I'm going to lead this one off, because I want to personally thank everyone's hard work they put into this. It was about a year and a half ago or so that the sheriff and Deputy Dixon invited us all down to a range where they was using, which I was actually, I don't even know how to explain it, maybe surprised at what they was actually training with, because I have a much better place at my house to shoot than what law enforcement has. So, at that time, I spoke with Mike and Bill and yourself, and here we are today. So, I know that it's been, it seems like it's been a long time, and it's been slow, but I know there's been a lot of hard work put into this, so I'd like to see us be able to take action on this tonight and move ahead with it.
Commissioners, we do have Deputy Dixon here with us this evening and the sheriff. I did want to know if you guys had any observations, any comments that you would like to enter into the record this time.
Are you undercover tonight or something like that?
Just basically echo with the chief and the information, but I do want... It was about a year and a half ago or so that the sheriff and Deputy Dixon invited us all down to a range where they was using, which I was actually, I don't even know how to explain it, maybe surprised at what they was actually training with, because I have a much better place at my house to shoot than what law enforcement has. So at that time, I spoke with Mike and Bill and yourself, and here we are today. So I know that it's been, it seems like it's been a long time, and it's been slow, but I know there's been a lot of hard work put into this, so I'd like to see us be able to take action on this tonight and move ahead with it.
Commissioners, we do have Deputy Dixon here with us this evening and the sheriff. I did want to know if you guys had any observations, any comments that you would like to enter into the record this time.
Are you undercover tonight or something like that?
Just basically echo with the chief and the information, but I do want to stress the issues that we've had lately with law enforcement. You know, we utilize different areas in Allegheny County, a range in back of WCI and MBCI. But the problems that we have is with our range instructors. We're only allowed to use it a couple days out of the year, and, you know, that's all we have available to us. So it's been a real restraint to us by basically relying on everybody else to do our training. And again, there's nothing more important than to make sure the individuals we're putting out there are well-trained in both lethal and non-lethal. So it's a wonderful project. It's something that we really do need here in Allegheny County. And again, I do, as the chief was saying, I do recognize that part about the citizens. I think it'd be a wonderful thing, too, if we have individuals that do have firearms in their homes. I personally would like to see them to be trained to know how to operate, you know, if they're going to keep them in their homes, to protect themselves, and also even protect themselves and be safe with these weapons. So I think it'd be a wonderful thing to open up every once in a while throughout the year to the citizens. Many people call and tell me they, you know, where can I go shoot? And it's really hard to give them any locations if they can actually go and fire a firearm. So I think it'd be a wonderful thing for the public to utilize and be more welcome, or be more than happy to do that with our training officers and provide that particular training.
Sheriff, quick question for you concerning range rules. I believe the NRA has established range rules for facilities such as this. Would we be able to just do a cut and paste some of those, yes?
The range in Frostburg is owned by the city of Frostburg. It is shared with Big Savvy Sportsman's Club and Mighty Mountain Sportsman's Club. They do up there, Melissa has one coming up the end of this month, a open class for anybody who wants to do what they do, who has never fired a handgun, or who wants to think about purchase one or has one. Grand pass left to you. It's open to the public. They do it all day, one day. I will get you the date on it off of her, I don't have it on me right now. But we also, within that group, have probably twenty, twenty-five NRA-certified main safety officers. If you wanted to do this, if you want to set up a day like that, with Bill, you need some help with this to be there, and you qualify a bunch of people, we'd be more than glad to come help, help you work with it. The help is there, and if you check with the voice of Frostburg, they have the manual up there, everything to cover what you need. It's already set up for the range up there. Take a range and get you doing the hour range.
Okay. Commissioners, this was an item that we were, at one point in time, hoping to discuss with you at a work session, but because of scheduling conflicts, we threw it on a public business meeting agenda. And if you're okay with this, we could put it on an agenda to take official action next week.
Fine.
At our meeting, and so that people would have an opportunity to comment if they so choose.
More consensus?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sounds good to me.
Thank you.
Something needed.
All right. Next week. Thank you all involved.
Sir, there was a gentleman raised his hand right here.
How much is this project potentially going to cost?
Sir, we would, okay, we believe that all the, this is going to be a cut-and-fill project. All the mound work that will be done will actually be taken from the site, and we believe that our roads department could actually do this project in probably a week to ten days. The cost that we do not have identified at this point in time will be the construction of the fence around the perimeter of the facility. That's something we will need to be working on here in short order.
We would know that number before we voted on it next week.
Chief Bobby.
It's certainly not a positive at this point, but there is some grant monies and things available that we're already looking into. There's a possibility that we could want some grant money that could be some help paid for, or maybe all the fencing. It's not positive, but it's something we're serving.
I believe you're right.
Okay, good. All right. Commissioners, item number four in our public hearing. This is the 2013 amendment to the 2011 Allegheny County Water and Sewage Plan. Mr. DeWitt.
Evening.
Good evening, sir.
I'll keep this brief here. I'll give you just a brief background of what we're doing here and what the purpose of the hearing is this evening. As required by COMAR, we need to do an annual review, report of our water and sewage plan. It's an important document, and most projects need to be listed in that document to be eligible for funding from Department of Environment or USDA, which is how the county gets a lot of its money to do utility projects. So last fall, we started this process. This is the 2013 amendment cycle. Obviously, we're in 2014 now. The bulk of the amendments were gathered last fall. There were some issues. We were waiting to try to get some resolution to include them, but then at the start of this year, we just decided to move forward. Later this fall, what we do in a comprehensive revision to the whole plan, which will be much more extensive and require some more review time, but the main purpose of doing these amendments annually is to include projects that aren't in the plan that need to be eligible for funding. So we send out feelers to our stakeholders, which is county, obviously, and then towns, municipalities, private system owners, to see if they have projects that need to be added to the plan in the interim, in between the larger rewrites, and then we add them in to the plan through a corporation of a resolution to get them as an official part of the plan. So we have a few projects from the town of Lonaconing, a few projects from the town of Westernport, and county utility projects that will be added in this amendment cycle. The amended plan and revision synopsis is on our website posted, accessible for anybody to view. At this point tonight, we'll be having a public hearing to accept comments or questions, and we'll, assuming no large changes need to be made that require a lot of time, we'll be planning on adopting those amendments with your approval at the public meeting next week. So at this time, I'd open up the public hearing for any comments or questions about the water and sewer plan amendments for 2013.
Looks like we didn't have anybody sign up. Ed, you put several here. Was that one of the issues you want to talk about?
No.
Okay, all right. Is there anybody else? Okay, we officially have this hearing closed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you, Dan. Okay. Commissioners, under our action agenda, item number five is the River Road Over CNO Canal Bridge Project, bridge number A-084. Good evening, Mr. Kael.
Evening, Commissioners. How are you?
Yeah.
What we're asking for tonight is permission for the Commissioners to authorize the Public Works Department to move forward with an MOU with the CSX. Get my pointer out here. CSX needs to replace a bridge across the Potomac River. See if I can do this better than Steve did. This bridge here, there's a Potomac River. The CSX needs to replace this bridge here. It's old and dilapidated and needs repaired. To do that, they need access to get in there and do the work. We have a bridge here that crosses the canal, and what they've agreed to do, to get access to that bridge, needs to be upgraded so they can get the equipment in. And they've agreed to pay for the design, fund the construction, fund the inspection of our bridge. So basically, the county will get a brand-new bridge out of this at no cost to us, so it's kind of a no-brainer. So we're asking permission for you to authorize signing MOU, and we will be installing, back this road here, it serves the Firebridge ponds, and also, I think there's two or three farms back there. There will be a temporary bridge constructed, so there will, nobody will be isolated, and that will be part of the construction process. So, if you have any questions?
No.
Bill, you want to bring up the one question that was brought to you?
This is being built by CSX, not by the county, because I was asked by a person today, why in the world is the county building a railroad bridge?
Okay, yes. CSX is building this bridge here.
Just for clarification.
Yes.
And they are also building a new bridge for us.
Yes, and it's exciting for our engineers. We're going to try to get down there and visit. I think they're planning on trying to haul in this bridge already put together and going to try to put it up in two or three days, so we're anxious to see that process. Bigger project than we're used to.
You need help?
Absolutely.
You want me to come on down?
He'd make a great flotation device.
That's what we're doing. That's all we're doing.
I was going to say, is there lunch or something being served there or what?
Yes, the county is not building this bridge.
Okay.
CSX is.
All right. Now, that's important. When we had somebody ask that question, we need to get that clarification for the citizens. So, okay, Commissioners, unless there's any questions, I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize the Board of County Commissioners to have the president sign a memorandum of understanding between CSX Transportation and Allegheny County to replace bridge number A-084 over the north branch of the Potomac River. Is there a said motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Valentine, seconded by Commissioner Brody. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Everly, what do we have on our consent agenda this evening?
Commissioners, we have three items on the consent agenda this evening. One relates to a travel request. We have a procurement project we'd like to get started concerning the building out in front for the sheriff's office and a request for proposal for our solid waste and recycling program.
Any questions for the administrator? No?
None.
I'd like to entertain a motion that we accept our consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brody, seconded by Commissioner Valentine. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have anything on your desk there, Mr. Everly?
Commissioners, just a point of clarification here. There is a news release for our 2015 budget schedule attached to the package here this evening, and just to let everybody know that your first public budget workshop will take place next Thursday afternoon at three o'clock in room 212. The scope of our presentation next week will deal exclusively with revenues.
Revenues.
Just the revenue side.
All right. Mr. Rudd.
I have nothing.
Thank you for attending.
No problem.
Commissioners, any comments, please?
I do, sir. I have, Mr. Everly, you attended a meeting recently, about a week and a half ago, pertaining to a CSO project down in the city of Cumberland's looking into, and if you would, sir, if you would give us a brief update of the outcome of the meeting, then I have some, I think maybe some comments on that, so, sir, if you would.
Okay. Well, there were a number of government jurisdictions that attended that meeting that day. The city of Cumberland hosted the forum, and the, that day, the representatives from Whitman Rec Works and Associates were on hand to discuss the first phase of a three-phase project for the town as a result of the combined sewer overflow consent decree that the city of Cumberland entered into back in the nineties. This is a massive project. The first phase of the project consists of a public investment of thirty million dollars. The total build-out of all three phases would be something in the order of ninety million dollars. As you know, Commissioners, in the past few years, the county has gotten its arms around about twenty million dollars' worth of its SSO requirements under the consent decree, and we have been able to do that fortunately, as our system is laid out in a more incremental fashion than the city of Cumberland is thinking, considering, doing with its program here. But it was a great presentation. The representatives from Maryland Department of the Environment were there, answered questions. There was some candid dialogue that went back and forth between many of the jurisdictions. But the long and short of it is that John Defonso, the director of Public Works for the city of Cumberland, admitted during the presentation that the first phase of this project is not something that the residents of either the city of Cumberland or Allegheny County users can afford to do. So the conundrum for us is, we embark upon a ninety-million-dollar initiative, and the honest observation by all parties there that it is going to be a stretch for us to even find a way to afford the first third of this project. And so if you take a look at the residents of the city of Frostburg, the residents of the Braddock Run area, Eppert, LaVale, Bedford Road, Jennings Run, they would be considered, at some point in time, a funding partner to help facilitate completing this project. And unless there's, you know, a grant share very similar to what Allegheny County and the city of Frostburg have been fortunate to get in recent years, and that's something in the ballpark of a seventy-five, twenty-five split, this project is not financially feasible. And it puts everybody in quite a conundrum. And needless to say, for the past three or four months, we've been having some informal, informal discussions concerning the surprise that we had, learning initially that the county and its residents would have to bear a portion of the cost. What that portion would be would be negotiated, but nonetheless, it is a huge project, and currently, the state of Maryland does not know of a funding source to help assist with this project.
Well, I'm going to give everyone just a little bit of background on this, because I've been thinking about this for a week and a half. Back when I first heard this in December, we asked the delegation to look into this. I did. I threw it right out there at the delegation meeting. Several months later, I got a call from Delegate Beitzel, that he was looking at this, and he agreed. I had asked some engineers what they thought of this project, and he said, we're going to have a meeting in Annapolis. Well, I went down to the meeting in Annapolis for a meeting on this, and it was canceled that day. Of course, they canceled it the morning when we had already left. So, and Senator Edwards was hosting the meeting, and his recommendation was for the city to get a hold of every player at the table and set up another meeting at, when they could. Well, I think that our staff got notification on a Friday afternoon of a meeting that was going to take place Wednesday, that us three was not invited to, which was one real sticking point with me. And then the real others, and I'm going to call Paul Kael up here in a minute, because we're going to ask him some questions on this, but the real sticking point to me was, sir, you was to relay a quote to us three on this subject. Do you remember what that quote was?
I think I can remember what that quote was.
Because I read it in the paper the next morning, and I believe it was, what, not to forget?
I don't know where it was quoted or if it was quoted, but we were asked to remind the Board of County Commissioners that the residents of the city of Cumberland are also county residents.
And I looked on the map, and sure enough, they're right. City of Cumberland is in Allegheny County, which was why I brought this up in the first place, because this ninety-plus-million-dollar project will actually fall back on the majority of this cost to the residents of the city of Cumberland if funding is not available, if they proceed with this. Because we're thirteen years into a twenty-year consent agreement that so far, the city of Cumberland, LaVale Sanitary Commission, and Allegheny County has spent a lot of time in correcting our own problems that they have not.
You mean Frostburg?
Yeah, 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 yeah. City of Frostburg, I'm sorry. Because ever since I read that article, for a week and a half, I've just been burning at the collar. So, Paul, if you mind, would you mind coming up here to the podium tonight? Because one of the other issues that was brought to our attention is that we knew this was going all along, and we didn't step in to advise any. So if you would, please, sir, would you do me a favor and reach out to John Defonso and offer some assistance in this? Because I have a very good relationship with the mayor and council of Cumberland, but I think that they're being led, and this is just personally, down the wrong road. And I know the city residents don't want strapped with this, because this does, and stop me if I'm wrong, this does nothing to address their current infrastructure whatsoever.
Yeah, and I think that's one of the biggest issues we discussed. What they're doing is they're adding their infrastructure. They're not, so at some point down the line, twenty years, who knows the answer to that, they're going to replace an infrastructure that's very old now that they'll have to spend additional money on. This creates new infrastructure that they'll have to maintain, but does not replace one piece of old infrastructure. And by myself, if I was city of Cumberland, I would not want to head down that road, because they're kind of delaying a problem and pushing it further down the road, in my opinion.
And not only does it not separate nothing and doesn't really fix nothing, there's also above the capital cost, there's going to be an operating cost associated with this, correct?
Absolutely. They'll have to pump this at certain stages, it will store, then they'll have to pump it back into the system, so, yes.
So actually, what we're trying to design is something to effectively treat rainwater, because essentially, that's what it is. And for those who don't know, when all these sanitary districts was built in the sixties, they was originally designed so that the streams didn't get septic through the summer, and they was designed with the intention of, during heavy rain flows and stuff, of discharge. And that, city of Cumberland's had an infrastructure in place probably since the eighteen eighties, and that's what it was designed for. Everything was to go into one pipe, and then when we started the plants and stuff in the fifties and... the '50s and everything, it was designed so that wood overflow. Well, we decided then, the state did, that that's not going to be allowed to happen anymore. So Frostburg's went through a separation process, and they keep chewing a little bit each year. The county and Laveo Sanitary Commission really never did have a combined system, but since that we connect the two jurisdictions, we was considered that, and which has been very good, because we've got a lot of infrastructure updated, replaced, a lot of leaking pipes out of the ground. But Cumberland hasn't addressed none of that.
If they had, I think they probably did some smaller projects, but no large projects that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
Well, I think years ago, we were concerned about that we would spend millions and millions of dollars, and the state and EPA would back off 20 years later and say, "We can't fix these problems,"
Correct.
"Because they're bigger than what we..." And we've been attending national conferences. Steve, I think we started back, and we went to a Virginia conference, we went to Pittsburgh, just to see what's happening nationally, and we're, our fear is we would spend $20 million trying to fix a problem that 10 years later, they'd say,
Correct.
"Well, we know we can't solve CSOs and SSOs." So we've been biting off a little bit at a time. We think that's the way to go, instead of trying to build a big project like this. They may invest that money and not have to, it may not solve the problem, or they may have invested $90 million that they didn't have to invest.
Well, and that's really my biggest concern, is, you know, every one of us sitting up here, including yourself, got, was involved with the Georges Creek project, and at the very end, when we was talking about roughly $4 million, people was very upset that it wasn't vetted enough in public, we didn't know we was going to pay for this, this and that. And this is one thing I want the people of Cumberland and of Allegheny County to know, is if we push forward with this, and this gets spread out amongst the users, it's going to affect everyone from Mount Savage to Frostburg, and everyone it puts into that plant, including the citizens of Cumberland, which will be responsible, if you normally do their split the way it was explained to me. Now, of course, understandably, there's been some backpedaling, will be responsible for two-thirds of that cost, and the outside users will be responsible for a third of that cost. And I can honestly sit here and say that the people of Laveo, Echert, and Frostburg, Jennings Run, and Mount Savage are not interested in funding this thing at the tune of $11 million or $12 million straddled on them. So if you would please, sir, and if, if you guys are okay with this, I would like to see Paul talk with them, because you as a city resident, do you know what that's going to do to your?
Yes, sir. I mean, we talk about not being able to afford, anyhow, yes, I'm in definitely consensus. If I'm not mistaken, you have been in conversation with the city of Cumberland. I mean, this isn't just out of the blue that this just sprung up, correct?
Once a year, we have meetings, because we're in a combined consent order between Frostburg, Laveo, Allegheny County, and Cumberland. So where are the meetings? It's kind of came to a head a little bit when they started. We're solving our problems, Frostburg's solving their problem, Laveo's solving theirs. We thought this was Cumberland's solution, so it really wasn't something we should have had, that was how they were approaching it. But they brought up recently, in the last year or so, that we would be part of, we as an Allegheny County, and Frostburg, et cetera, would be paying for a share of this $30 million. So it's kind of changed, so we had a discussion at Pace about this, that we weren't, we thought they were heading down the wrong road. And it would be. The funding agencies have all said to us, they don't know where $30 million would come from, so even if it was the correct solution, there's not funding to do that.
But that's only the first phase. It's an overall $90 million project.
And that was just presented, that's, we were asleep, and that was just presented to us in recent memory, too, that this was the first phase. I thought this was the one and only phase, not the, just the first of three.
When was the consent order?
Steve, we're, we had 20, it's 20 years, so.
Okay, so we need to make clear that this isn't this Board of Commissioners, and it's not the council member and the mayor of the city of Cumberland right now. We're talking a 20-year process here. And so it talks about, you know, either you handle the issue and you work at it a bit at a time, or you kick the can down the road, and unfortunately, it sounds like the can has come to roost in the city of Cumberland, so.
It's getting closer to down the road. Yep, we're just getting years closer.
Well, asking the taxpayers to foot one-third, $30 million of a project, that when I've got a commissioner here who eats, breathes, and sleeps water, sewer issues, tells me it doesn't, what they're doing doesn't work. It's not the correct plan of action, and it doesn't take care of any of their infrastructure. If they had done what the city of Cumberland has done, I mean, city of Frostburg has done, you'd actually have some roads in the city of Cumberland that would be paved, because they would have been taking different sections. It would have taken longer, it would have taken smaller bites, but there would actually be roads that would be fixed in the city of Cumberland, so.
Yeah, I would like to reach out, I mean, we have a very good relationship, staff love John Defonso, actually, I worked for city of Cumberland, Tom, considering I'm a friend. I would like to try to reach out for our departments and all the engineers to get together to try to get a more viable solution.
I think that's a great idea. Please take the lead on that.
Okay.
Please take the lead.
I think it's going to take a series of long meetings between us internally and then get the state and EPA involved, because to throw out a $90 million solution for a county that has 70-some thousand people is, to me, is insanity, whether it's the correct procedure or not, it's not possible. But we'd be happy to, and hopefully, we'll have a series of meetings, and I didn't, I have to echo your comments, I didn't like that we were invited to a meeting on Friday afternoon that was going to be Wednesday, when there was a lot of people from Baltimore coming too, so I know that meeting, I suspect, was scheduled beforehand. We'd like to add input at that meeting.
Right, because, you know, when I was sitting right there with Senator Edwards, when he said we need to have some other meetings, but just to make sure that everybody involved is at the table, I mean, I was sitting right there and heard the senator say that, and we went back with the intention of thinking, well, we hear within the next three or four weeks, something will happen, we'll all be notified, then we didn't hear nothing, didn't hear nothing, then, we never did get an email on it, at all period, and then I found out about it Monday morning from, through a different gentleman, it was a meeting Wednesday.
To me, it's a simple solution, and we'll reach out, and hopefully, we can work to some good solution in the future, but if there's X amount of dollars to solve your problems, and if we dump all that money into solving this problem, the other issues that we have, education, roads, bridges, et cetera, where are you going to get money for that? So that's, that's kind of the way I look at that.
Paul, MDE, the representatives that day, had indicated that the pot of money that we've been relying upon, and a lot of jurisdictions across the state have been relying upon annually, to his department is about $5 million. That's about it.
Across the state, and if you remember, USDA, Pace said they'd get $3 million for the same jurisdiction, so would, you do the math, you know, if they provided all those funds, we'd be in trouble.
Well, I think the only last little tidbit before we move on, if I may, sir, is that in our delegation, Delegate Wendell Bytsel is also a water and sewer wonk, and when he confirms what Commissioner Brody has been saying, that just tells me that we've got to get everyone together, and we've got to figure out a better plan, because the city of Cumberland or the county residents cannot afford a $90 million project.
And we'd love to get down this road as a partnership, not start fighting with each other.
Exactly. No, no, absolutely, that's what, it needs to be done, so please, reach out. Thank you, Commissioner.
Certainly.
Anything else? I mean, that's enough.
Yeah, not till next week, because we've got some other issues that's going to start coming a week at a time now, so.
And we'll keep you informed as the progress moves along. We'll have a number of individuals, so hopefully, we can keep going.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioner Valentine?
Just a few quick things on some of the legislative issues we've talked about here in the past couple of weeks. The marijuana decriminalization bill is now officially dead for this year. I'm sure it'll come up next year. They're doing a summer study on that. The minimum wage bill did pass exactly as the governor wanted, so overnight, once the law becomes effective, the minimum wage will go from $7.25 to $10.10 an hour. And they did actually vote to send money for pothole repairs to every county, since they took all the highway user funds, and they know the roads are in such terrible shape from the rough winter we had, instead of actually returning highway user funds, they said, "Here's some money to go fix your pothole." So that was very generous of them. We'll spend it.
I think that's a tune of about $238,000, and when you have the amount of roads that we have in the county, as well as the town and municipalities, that that's not going to go very far at all. It's actually insulting.
I think that would actually cover the bottom end of Paca Street there.
Well, it's almost as insulting when they send the town of Luke $238, and Route 135 is one of the most heaviest trafficked, truck traffic roads, and here you go, here's $238. So, there again, when you pass a law, highway user funds is supposed to be used for bridges and roads. Don't rate it and use it for something else. Use what it was designed for. It was an agreement way back in, what year?
1927.
When the county and the state came together, and the county said, "Okay, we'll accept this, but we're going to work together as a team." And unfortunately, the state has let us down. Anyhow, okay.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................